But as usual, we want to welcome you to Georgetown County School Board regular work session at approximately 5:30 Tuesday, September 20th, 2022. And we will begin this with a moment of silence, followed by pleasure allegiance, all of which responsibility is to the board. Amen.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's terrible.
Now we have public comments or requests, and I'm looking at something in bold here. So I guess it's to get my attention. Comments or requests should be brief and to the point as possible, shall not exceed, shall not exceed three minutes, and must not mention specific names of students or personnel. Any other cards? We have one card so far. Any others? All right, Mr. Neal. It's topic of interest. It's personnel issues.
Good evening again to Dr. Lance, Chairman of the Board, Superintendent Price. I'm here today to address the concerns and mistreatment of black administrators here in Georgetown County School District. It is clear to me that the climate survey is not a due process for demoting principals or assistant principals. There was a principal removed from Maryville High School from the principal position due to a climate survey that has yet to be revealed to her, nor have been revealed to the school board. This do not give due process to her, nor does it address her performance. Sending persons to chat with teachers is not the process. I'm asking that the board to review the situation again. A teacher should not be told the write-up will go away when the principal is gone. This process was only used on four black principals for the purpose of removing them. Two of them, two of them, two of the four is gone. This is considered discrimination and racism at the least. The question is, what employee filed, when an employee filed a grievance? Climate survey is not part of the process to give credence to demote an employee. The board should do a climate survey on the same situation as it, with the superintendent as it does with the principal, because it is no different for blacks at the district office. It is time for you all to have a chat with the district staff and take the same action. This district is racially divided under the superintendent. The principal at college may have proven over and over again, based on performance, that an improvement plan is not warranted. It is warranted, is what is, if it is warranted for his performance, every principal in the school district should have an improvement plan. Look at Walker Mall for instance, of five schools, one black administration, no black teachers. Let the record show that human resources that not, should not be employed to a school to chat with teachers, to justify lies from a few racist teacher that do not want to be held accountable. It is time to take the knees off the neck so that Larry Odom can breathe and those other principals. If he is not the principal of the year, all questions should, has been answered. This board needs to address the situation on how human resources report information as it relates to race. If they are reporting Caucasian as white, African-Americans should be reported as black, not minorities. Our, your process is biased as it is relates to reporting. Every race has an identity and should be reported as such. There is a serious problem here. What is going on here is by design. This is the worst I've seen. Thank you for your opportunity to speak to you this evening. God bless you.
Still moving along. Next, we have approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Let me accept the minutes as given. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Poses? None eyes have it. The minutes have been approved. Adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and second, that we accept the, that we adopt the agenda as presented. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Poses? None eyes have it. We on our way to a packed, filled agenda. Next order of business. Dr. Milton, President Doug. You know, he knows why I call him president, all right? So it's, it's not a takedown, oh, it's not a step up, all right? It's one of Arthur's, I guess, I don't want to say sense of humor. In either ways, the administration recommends the approval of the personnel list as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Question. It's been moved and properly sec, and second.
Excuse me. Mr. Walker said yes. Did you say something, Mr. Walker?
Yes, I had a personnel, well, not really a personnel question, but it's for those two, Dr. Milton and Mr. Jenkins. Who are considered minorities as far as students? I thought they were coming up and I was going to ask the question, but nobody came up, so I just asked a question.
Could you hear what he said?
Who are considered minorities?
Mr. Walker, could you repeat that, please, sir, your question?
I said, who are considered minorities as far as students go? I was going to ask the question because I thought they were coming up, Mr. Jenkins, but he didn't, so I'm just asking.
Okay, do you want?
Did you hear me, Dr. Farrow?
Can I intercede here? Because I can hear, yes, I did hear you, and Mr. Jenkins is taking the podium now.
Right.
Good evening.
My question, I had a question as far as who's considered minorities when it comes to students, and that's, that's a human res, resource question. I thought you were coming up, and that's why I'm asking you.
Yes, sir, I think the pause dealt with the word student. But if you're referring to employees, minorities would be African-American, Asian, Hispanic, Latinos, Pacific Islanders, Native Americans, so it covers a wide gamut of individuals.
Does that include women as well?
No, sir.
Okay.
In the way that we have to report for DOJ and State Department purposes, it doesn't single out gender.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? All right, the motion is still out there. All those in favor of accepting the personnel list as presented, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Poses? None eyes have it. You have your lists, President Jenkins. Still moving along. Let's get some good news, or good ideas, starting with Helping Hands Youth Empowerment Program. And for this particular thing, we have Mr. Barber back there. I thought we had run him out of town, but undoubtedly didn't work. So he's back again, so.
Well, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Lance, School Board members, and Superintendent Price. If I may, Mr. Chairman, can I approach?
Right, Mr. Chair.
I'd like to approach just to hand you some information.
I'm sure.
Thank you.
All right, you're doing, all right.
Thank you.
Don't you ever get home, you know, you did 25 years.
Doc, you know, we're just trying.
Well, again, good evening, and I must say, at the last minute, Program Director Reverend Ronald McInnes, he took ill. And so let's keep him uplifted in prayer. Hopefully, he'll, he'll get better, because it's been a long day presenting and actually, actually, I had the pleasure, and I'm humbled that I was able to speak with your GED students, adult ed students, today earlier at 11 o'clock over at Howard, and, and that went well. You have some, we have some impressive young people in our county, and they really need our support. But I want to thank you particularly for allowing the Youth Empowerment Program, Helping Hands of Georgetown, to be in your schools, in our schools during the day. Let's start, if you'd click for me, you know, what is YEP? YEP is, YEP is really a program that enhances our young people, builds self-confidence, self-esteem, and we do it in various ways. Can you go to the next one? We, we address their, their mental state, we address their physical state, and how can our young people, who's our future generation, work together to make sure that as we retire and we go off into the sunset, that we have young people that are ready to support our needs? How, how do we exactly do that? Well, we encourage our kids to be work-ready. We encourage them to either go into the military, to a two-year school or a four-year school. We do it in several ways. If you look at our kids within the Georgetown County community, particularly during the summer, a lot of times, they don't have the means to explore outside of their block. I'm not going to talk about the neighborhood, but just outside of the block. And then, along with that, how can we assist them with the documents and the procedures that they need to, to further their future? So we do that, and I'm not going to read that stuff verbatim, I'm just going to talk to you as, as, as an individual helping our kids. If we can move on to the next. We have evidence base, what we call gaming. Of course, from a curriculum standpoint, we'll call it assessments and state testing. Youth science is actually being used right now in the state of Georgia, in the public school system, and in Greenville County School District, and we've, at Helping Hands, we have administrative rights at this time. So our youth science is really getting our kids to the point where they're using games to measure aptitude, to measure interests, and then working along with our school counselors, our administrators, and even our special service department. You can use youth science, once we get the reports back, you can use it for your individual graduation plans, and you can use it for your individual education plans. So those reports will be completed by the end of October. Again, this is about our kids. What has helped, and you've blessed us with being inside our high schools, now we've solved, we've, we've solved some of the logistics. We don't have to worry about our kids finding a way home after school, because we're a program based on academics and extracurricular activities. So the kids that really need the assistance to give us that boost, we have where we meet with, you know, during the time period designated by our school administrators at the appropriate times, we meet with them and we're able to resolve issues. You know, kids, kids, they pick up on, on whether you care for them by when you care for them. When they're down, that's the time they need us. And with your help, our help, we address those needs with our kids. Folks always talk about, well, you're using a measuring tool. Now, I'm going to speak to you just as a school counselor, as I retired, and of course, I don't have to tell the school board members and, and the administration, our kids get tested out. So from a psychological standpoint, you have to figure out a way to get them back to doing what they need to really get true results off an assessment. So that's why youth science approach, they approached this assessment from a gaming standpoint. What does Generation Z do? They play games. They download apps. You know, they even do business and they talk to one another with apps. So that's how we have to, have to think about it, but right now, we have that ability here in Georgetown County School District to use that, that assessment tool. You know, you always wonder, it's hard, what do I do now? What are the answers? There are no answers to youth science. There are no right or wrong answers. You play the game because we want to know, what will it take for you to be a successful young person? Just a note, a week and a half ago, I was reading the Wall Street Journal, and this relates to the pandemic. Do, do we, do we actually know that during the pandemic, there, the pandemic has created over 10.5 million orphans, kids without parents or guardians? And that burden falls back on us at the public school level. So whatever we can do to partner, we need to make sure we help our kids. Someone said the pandemic is over. No, it's not. There are side effects from a mental standpoint and from a physical standpoint. It's still going on. Check, talk to, talk to your, your medical profession, professionals, and also your folks in mental health. There's still a lot going on, not only with our children, but also our adults. In 2022, the graduating class of 2022, we had 100% of our seniors graduated. Seventeen graduated, 16 went on, and they were accepted to college, either a two-year college or a four-year college, and one chose the military. You say, well, outside of meeting in the schools, how else do we accomplish this? Well, coming up this December, as usual, we take all our kids to the Florida Everglades. They spend a week. No communications whatsoever. We have to prep them. Why take them to the Florida Everglades and partner with Outward Bound? Couple of things. All of us complain there's not a workforce. All of us complain kids don't communicate now. But when you go to the Florida Everglades, and you're only out there with a global mobile and two, and two guides, the only thing you could do is maneuver by compass, handheld compass, map, and you go from island to island. Now, when our kids go, all four of the high schools are represented, represented. So guess what? Georgetown students don't hang out with Georgetown students. They hang out with kids, they're teamed up with kids, our students from different high schools, so they can learn a couple of things. How do I leave base camp and I get to the first island, and how do I set up for the night? Cooking, you know, tents have to be pitched. Then you got to figure it out. We've got to communicate and work together. That's one of the key things. You know, I sit here and, and, and one of your board members, Bill Gaskin, he was our, he was our former associate director. And Bill, when we first started going to the Everglades, we took the airlines. And of course, kids being kids, sometimes they're canceled, but the kids who were in waiting didn't have an opportunity to take that seat. So now we use a charter bus. And we knew, we use a charter bus for two reason, reasons. If you know about the airline industry, they're understaffed, so you might show up at the airport and your flight's either hour or two hours delayed, or your flight's canceled. Well, we can't cancel a flight if we're going down there to deal with Outward Bound. So now we charter a bus to take them. And it gives us some advantages, because as they drive down Alligator Alley in the Everglades, they start to see signs, Alligator Crossing, Cougar Crossing, and the eyes light up. But the experience about the Florida Everglades brings unity, and it brings self-confidence. So when they come back to you and they're in the classrooms, now they know they can do things that they didn't even thought was possible. And then during the months, whether ziplining, kayaking on the Black River, going to the escape room with an hour to try to figure out how to get out and team up, this all enhances curriculum. So we're able to provide a resource to, to our school district that I know you have some guidelines that you can't go outside of the box, but we can enhance our students so that they can be successful. We partner with Boeing during the summer, the kids went to Boeing. They also went to the South Carolina Aquarium in Charleston. They explored Ori Georgetown Technical School. So we don't, we, we make sure during the summer, they're involved some way, some form. And then at Helping Hands, we're a one-stop shop. If our kids have a problem or the family have a problem, they can go to our free dental clinic, Thursdays through Fridays. They can, the family members can receive employment skills training, additional help with utilities, and we always feed folks. But instead of just giving folks groceries, we want to break that cycle. We want our families, particularly in Georgetown County and in our school district, we want to break that cycle to say, hey, look, there's an opportunity out there, not only for you to help yourself, but to help your family. And if I'm the first one in my family going to, going to school, going to college, think, think about the impact that's going to have on our school district. Here are some pictures. Stella Mercom, she's talking to our kids about financial security and also about the tech world, if you can flip out some others. Here are our kids, they're having their last supper before they go to the, into the Everglades. Best experience down there, just if you could go on through. The other thing is, this is the ziplining that they experience, and it's all about teamwork. Here, we're, we're kayaking the Black River, and then we also went on a bicycle trail tour. And here, they're at the escape room, trying to escape, but they have to work together in order to do that within one hour. As you know, years and years ago, Helping Hands was considered a food pantry, and that was it. But now we're all about our young people, and we're about our neighbors. There are no, we're, folks now are no longer our clients, they're our neighbors. We have to help our families, and in helping our families, we help you here at the school district. First of all, I want to thank you. Lynn Ford is, Bill made sure that we kept the family close, so he brought in Lynn Ford to serve as our associate director. But I have to give credit where credit is due, and Bill can tell you, John Bush, our former executive director, had a vision for enhancing our young people. And then he worked with Dr. Pringle, God bless her soul, and we started at Georgetown High. And for a while there was like, hey, how are we going to get this done? But through grace and through God's help, we were able to partner with you and continue with the partners that we've formed here in Georgetown County. We have moved even a step further, Apprenticeship Carolina, we're working with them, the WOE, South Carolina Works, we're with them, and now our business owners are actually asking us to let them take our youth empowerment kids, employ them, and mentor them from their sophomore to their senior year. So it's, it's, it's all a family thing. So I want to thank you again for all that you're doing for our, our young people, and I want to thank Ronald McInnes, Natasha Smith, Genesis Wright, they're, they're the ones who really get out there and, and walk the pavement. And again, thank Bill Gaskin and Lynn Ford, because Bill was there when I wasn't, and then Lynn came on board. But again, thank you for allowing us to work with our kids. And I have to say this, we're, we're not a club. We're a resource program to help the entire school district. So thank you, God bless you. If you have any questions, now's the time.
I wanted to make one comment, Mr. Barber. This is the real deal program here. One of the things that he failed to mention, I want to point out, is that we're not finished, our team's not finished, and I say our team, we're not finished with them when they graduate from high school. We follow these kids after high school and into employment. And that's one, one unique factor about our Youth Empowerment Program. Thank you, Mr. Barber.
No, thank you. Any other?
No question. Yes, Dr. Farrow? I noticed, I noticed some of the partners you have, which is very good. I was just curious, healthy learners, do y'all partner with that many?
Yeah, we partner, and, and the way we partner, sometimes we can't make, we, we don't have the resource, so we refer right away. We have over 62 nonprofits in the area that we work with, and one of our primary partners, Benel, the Benel Foundation, along with Sisters of Charity. I mean, it's just great. We have a student right now, just to share this story before I leave, we have a Georgetown High student who's a senior, and he's dual-enroll. He's here at Georgetown High, and he's also at Ori Georgetown Tech, and he hopes to get certified in Megatronics. So that's, that's the thing we're pushing. All right? Anything else? If not, we're just a phone call away. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. So maybe it was a good thing that you returned, okay?
I want to volunteer.
Now, let's see, can we get to Mr. Price's study? Ten-year facility study.
I'm going to go through.
Good evening, Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Chairman of the Board, members of the board. Pleasure to be here tonight to give you an update on the facility plan. Let me give, give you a brief background and introduction, is that we initially gave a facility study back in 2015. That report was used as a basis for the bond referendum in 2015. That report was used as a basis for the bond referendum in 2016. And then the bond program itself followed that as the backbone and the framework for the renovations and the work that's just been done. This is an update on that program. Generally, they suggest that you have a facility study done every five years. This is a little bit beyond that, but because we were already in a renovation program, this is really a suitable time to have this facility study done. And just to give you some background on facility study is that this is really set up as a framework and a guide for the maintenance staff to maintain the facilities and as a guide, a budgetary guide to give you an idea of the expenses forthcoming in the coming years that the board needs to prepare for, the district needs to prepare for. That's really what this is for as a framework. This isn't a specific guide of items to do. It's a framework for what this district needs to plan to do over the next 10 years and be financially ready to execute that. For this facility study here, we established a committee. It was headed by Mr. Tyrone Davis, Mr. Craig Evans, Mr. Michael Johnson were part of that. Chris Hans from our office, an estimator was involved in it. Troy Tillman, our project manager here, and myself were all involved in this committee to generate this report. All of us were involved. We met and reviewed every facility in the district. We looked at HVAC systems, flooring, roofing. We met with the staffs at each of those schools, reviewed any problems they were having with the schools, and also asked them for any input on any upgrades or improvements that they thought the schools needed to take. We compiled that list, brought it back here. We then met together and established a set of parameters to address the issues on there. And some of those parameters included a goal to paint the corridors and hallways of the schools on a five-year cycle, painting classrooms and other ancillary spaces on a 10-year cycle, seal coating and restriping the parking lots and the drives on a 10-year cycle, replacing HVAC equipment on an 18- to 20-year cycle, and replacing roofs on a 20-year cycle. Now, we talk about replacing the roof on a 20-year cycle. That doesn't mean they have to be done every 20 years. Most roofs come with a 20-year warranty. That's looked at as a reasonable lifespan for a roof. But really what we need to do is, in that timeframe, is evaluate the roofs again and find out whether or not they're living shorter or longer than those lifespans. Through the operation, the bond program and other projects that we've done, we've done a number of roof projects, all of those have replaced ballasted roofs, built-up roofs, which was the past. Current roofs we're all installing are modified Benjamin roofs. I think these will probably last 20 years longer. They'll do, I think, better than the roofs we've had before. But they need to be evaluated. And on that 20-year cycle, you need to at least be expecting to do that. They might last a few more years than that. And that's really what I was trying to get across, is that it's not a hard line. Once we get to that point, you need to find out whether or not they actually need to be replaced. Same thing with HVAC equipment for the district. We don't really have central systems. It's all pretty much individual systems. And those systems will fail more in a bell curve than anything else. So some of the early units may fail. That doesn't mean we replace all the units, as they might have several years more use to get out of those. And it's more efficient and cheaper to replace a lot of the units than try and replace individual units. So those are some of the bases that we use for studying with the program. Now, after we went through all these items we had on here, we broke these down into two categories. One is basic needs. Those are items we considered as high priority. And then we had a lot of other ideas that we thought that the board and the district needed to look at. Those were optional items we left in a separate list on there. Once we established all those items, we agreed on the items that we needed to address. We went through and estimated those. We quantified tons of HVAC equipment, square footage of roofing, flooring, whatever it may be, put our numbers all together, and then came up with a timeframe of when those needed to be changed. And then we've also attached an escalation factor on those costs because over 10 years, costs go up. Figure that we used on there is 4%. And you know, as everyone would know, was that right now we're in 8% or 9% inflation. But inflation can have a dramatic effect on cost. And we don't think we're going to stay at 8% or 9%. We were at 2% for so long. So we've established 4% as a reasonable average over the next 10 years. So that's what this report reflects. Talk about first is the 10-year plan for the base needs. That's in your report. As you can see, for the 10 years, we've got roughly $48 million estimated. For the first three years, it's only about $5 million. It's roughly $1.7 million a year. That's well within range of what we'd expect after this large renovation project. The next four or five years is roughly $5 million a year, but almost half of that is at Waukamaw High School. That's an HVAC replacement. And then that six-to-10-year timeframe, that's 2/3 of our cost. And you'll also notice that Georgetown High School represents 1/3 of all the cost over the next 10 years. That school will need new roofing, HVAC units, and we think significant repaving of the parking lots and drives in that timeframe. The other thing I wanted to make a point of is that we established this list and this cost irrespective of the available funds. Some of this will come from maintenance and some will come from 8% funds. We didn't try to match up with available budget funds and with the county. We established what we think are the needs of the schools, and that's what's reflected here. Now, my next slide is to give you some idea of what's involved. This is just a categorization of those areas. Most of the cost you can see is roofing, a little over $15 million. HVAC replacement, roughly $12 million. Painting, about $10 million. The repaving areas, about $4.5 million. We've got about $2.5 million for seal coating, roughly $1.5 million for flooring, and half a million for bleachers and doors and hardware. That's to just give you some idea of the activities and where the money is going to be going over the next 10 years.
Doors and hardware? What specifically about doors and hardware?
Some of the hardware has got, is not keyed all alike in the facility. I'm trying to think if, I can't remember if it's Kensington. We've changed a lot of the hardware, I know at Waukamaw High School, to get it all on one key. But the hardware will wear out. In our renovation project, we changed a lot of the panic hardware on a lot of the exterior doors. Some of the other schools, we noticed that the hardware, the door knob, that kind of hardware needs to be done. There are also some door replacements that we think will be done. We did a lot of that through the bond program, but there's still some more left to be done. And then finally is just a list of optional items. And I'm only going to bring your attention to two items on there. Mr. Walker and I think Dr. Lance had mentioned about the entrance into the athletic area at Carvers Bay High School. That item is listed in here. I want to say it's like a million and a half dollars we have budgeted for that. Just wanted to let you know that item was addressed in here. And then one other item I just wanted to highlight, at Andrews High School, the principal had noted there that the entrance to the gymnasium isn't comparable to the other schools. And that's true, as Georgetown and Waukamaw have formal entrances, they have concessionaries and bathrooms as you walk in. Carvers Bay, you come in the front door, but the gym is right there. But at Andrews High School, it's back off the front entranceway, and it's not really the same in there. And I'm not recommending we do that. I'm just saying that's one item, that's one of the items we looked at as probably does need to be addressed at some point in time. Now, I've given you a summary of what we've got, and I think from there, we'll open up to any questions you might have.
I'm sorry, is, may I?
No.
And I apologize for this, but little, Carvers Bay, there's no apostrophe for Carvers Bay. Okay? You've got that written throughout the report? Okay? That's number one.
We didn't have Lisa proofread this. Lisa Ackerman uses us a great job of catching all those things for us.
Okay, now, that's the next person I was going to ask. I noticed the people that you had listed there, you know, very competent, very competent, Mr. Evans, Mr. Johnson, of course, Dr. Davis back there. But I didn't see Lisa's name. And Lisa has been, you know, a major partner in all this stuff. Was she not part of this process?
She was not part of this process. She's part of procurement, and she was not part of this committee.
Okay, the reason why I'm saying, I battled her so many times over the years when I was principal of Georgetown High, you know, about wanting stuff, and she'd keep saying, no, no, no. But you know, after a while, you know, when you start getting your brains beat in, you start respecting the other person, because she beat me up pretty bad. But I was just curious, you know, why she wasn't part of it, because she's very knowledgeable and, you know. Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you. That's all right.
But I have a question. I think I missed the reason you gave for why Georgetown High School is so phenomenal in Gauri.
Well, you know, that is your largest facility. So the cost obviously there are typically more. But that's for a re-roofing, significant re-roofing of the school, significant HVAC replacement. And then of all the schools you have, the parking and the roads are in the worst shape there. We seal coated, we fixed a lot of the major cracking in there, did some patches. But I think in the next 10 years, I think we're going to have to go through and repave. I think during the bond program, the parking lot off of the Career Center, we repaved that area. And obviously, the new parking lot up front. But the rest of those areas are not in the best of shape. And I think in 10 years' time, or sooner than that, you're going to have to repave and patch a lot of those areas.
So basically, yeah. Funds from the bond, we sort of like decided to get more out of the roofing. My question is basically, now, why we just didn't go ahead and change it during the bond?
Well, two reasons for that. One, it wasn't listed in the program. We tried to stay close to the program. But really, is that the roof at Georgetown High does not need to be changed now. The HVAC units don't need to be changed now. They will in this five-to-10-year timeframe. And the same thing with the drives. We did patch the drives, we did seal coat to extend the life. But in, you know, the six-to-10-year timeframe, we think you're going to need to do more.
Anybody else?
How does this fit into with our capital improvement plan over the next few years?
So one of the things that we'll have to do now, now that we have the results of this facility study, is Mr. Davis and his team, along with us in our finance office, we will work to look at available 8% capital funds over the next 10 years and take the results of this study and craft out a map for what funds we'll have available to address the items that have been identified as needing attention. So I think what we, in our discussion with Mr. Sabyer, is we look like, it looks like we'll be able to use those available funds over the next five years to address those needs. And then once we get beyond the five years, it gets a little more cloudy and less clear. And so at that point, we'll take a closer look to see where do we go from here. But we feel like we've got a good plan based on this for the next five years. And now we'll map out an action plan with the available funds that we expect to have through capital.
One other thing, too. It's amazing, the schools, the number of schools, Mr. Bob, that were built in the '50s, you know, like Plantersville, Maryville. I'm not sure about Kensington. I don't have it memorized, but I know we had a number of schools. They've held up pretty well, except for those, you know, exterior things like the roofs and so forth, because you're going, just like you said, if you have a five- or 10-year plan, you have to plan on changing those out. But I'll tell you what, you know, the expression, they don't build them like they used to. I'll tell you that those buildings have really held out tremendously. I mean, McDonald's, 68, that building's 68 years old. And we have, the reason why I remember that one is because it's birthday year for me. So wow, that's pretty good.
Facilities have held up well, but again, part of that is taking care of those facilities. You take care of them, you get a long life out of them. Okay? Thank you.
Classified and certified staffing. Stop the Milton and President Jenkins.
Good evening, Dr. Lance, Superintendent Price, and board members, our cabinet members, and our guests who are here with us this evening. I will be presenting the classified staffing presentation. And what I did was compile the last three fiscal years. Next slide. 2021, 2022, and 2023. For the 2020-2021 school year, for the classified division, we had 55 new hires. From that, there were 36 minority. And that number looks kind of low. If you can recall, that was a year that we began in a hybrid year. And speaking with Mr. Price, and I think Lisa Johnson, I suggested that we kind of hold positions, classified positions. We weren't sure if we needed to fill those positions or not. So we end up having very low hires for that year. We were able to manage, and that's why you see that low number there for 2020-21. And then for 2021-2022, we had 112 new hires, and from that, there were 70 minority. And you see the gender there. For 2022-2023, 61 new hires, and that was 43 minority. And in my report, minority actually only captures African-Americans. I just want to make sure I point that out. The next slide, it just gives you your bar graph to show an overall percentage of where we are as far as minority versus non-minority. For 2021, we had 65.45%. 2022, 62.50%. And then you see there for 2023, 70.49%. And that's all of our new hires for the last three fiscal year. Moving on to our transfers. Again, I captured the three years, fiscal year '21, '22, and '23. For 2020-21, we had 18 transfers. From that, there were 12 minority who were transferred. 2021-22, we had 21 transfers, 10 minority. 2022-2023, eight minority and 15 transfers. And I want to also point out with the transfers, from those numbers, for 2021, there were nine minority who were promoted for non-minority. And then the others were either lateral or they requested the change. For 2021-22, there were seven minority who were promoted, non-minority, nine promoted, and the others were lateral or they requested transfers on their own. And then for 2022-2023, out of the numbers, we had six of those minorities who were promoted, and then seven of the non-minority were promoted, and the others were lateral or they requested a change. The next slide will show the bar graph for our non-minority versus minority for our transfers. And you can see there for 2022 and '23, we're kind of even there. 2021, we had 66.67% of our transfers were minority. As I stated, 2022, we had 47.62% minority, 52.38 non-minority. And 2023, 53.33% minority and 46.67 non-minority. Are there any questions for me?
Excuse me. Excuse me.
Excuse me.
I was muted. I'm sorry. I need Dr. Milton to please come back.
I'm here.
Oh, I'm sorry, Doc. I have my mic muted.
No, I just got back.
Yeah. You said it was 70 minority, and you mentioned that they all were African- Yeah. You said it was 70 minority, and you mentioned that they all were African-American. And as you went through your list of minority, were they all African-Americans or of other nationalities?
They're all African-Americans.
Okay. All right. I was just curious, when you use the word minority, are there other races involved?
For the report that I presented, for minority, they were African-Americans.
Okay. All right. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Chairman Lance, members of the board, Mr. Price, district staff, and guests. I'm going to do an update on the certified staff. For the 2021 school year, we hired three school administrators. Of the three, they were Caucasian. Then, for the teachers, we hired a total of 84, and you can see the breakdown there. 59 Caucasian, 22 African-American, three others. Then, I did a breakdown for elementary, middle, and high. So, you can see, the largest number of new hires were for the middle school level for the 2021 school year. The district staff that you see on there would be for itinerant individuals, such as schools psychologists and speech therapists, individuals that are not keyed to a specific location. For the transfers for the 2021 school year, we had full school administrators, four that were transferred, and 19 teachers that were transferred for that year. Moving on to the 21-22 school year, we hired nine, excuse me, seven school administrators, two African-American, five Caucasian, a total of 88 teachers. You can see the breakdown there. And as you can see, we're making a switch now towards the majority of the turnover. New hires were at the high school level. For the transfer, we had three school administrators that transferred and 17 teachers. And the majority of our transfers are lateral moves. They are not promotions. For this year thus far, we hired four school administrators. Two of them are African-American, two of them are Caucasian. You can see that we have had the highest teacher recruitment for probably the longest that I've been in HR, which is 20 years now. We hired 125 teachers thus far. We still have three vacancies, so we still have a few more to hire. 84 Caucasian, 33 African-American, eight other. And you can see the significant hiring was at the secondary level at the high school with 52. The district staff at eight. For transfers, we had four school administration transfers and 23 teacher transfers. Then, I looked at the retention rates. Retention rates fall a year behind. So, for the 1920, it was 89%. For the 2021, it was 82%. And we are working on our SARA report for this year, and this will probably be the first year that we will not be in the 80% retention rates. We're probably going to be in the upper 70s for this year, which is still significantly higher than the state average. But for a school district that used to be in the 90s, it is a significant slide for us. Then, I want to give you an adept update.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
With your new hires for '22-'23, I guess that's what this is for, with your new hires, how are you finding, I know you have, the district has a partnership with HBCUs?
Yes, ma'am.
How are you finding that going, and what's that process?
With the HBCU?
HBCUs, yes.
Okay. With the HBCUs, unfortunately, there is not large recruitment fairs like there used to be. I sent, I think, all of you the commencement to graduation for South Carolina State University, where you saw that there were only five with education majors for the entire graduating class. But we still invite to our recruitment fairs that we do. We reach out on a nationwide database, which is called School Springs. With School Springs, it targets, you can target different areas that you want to. And of course, we try and we pay extra money for not just the local historic, sorry, HBCUs, but also nationwide. The furthest that we've recruited so far was actually from Sitka, Alaska. So, Sitka, Alaska. So, we have had individuals come to us from all over. We also do try to, when we're looking at hard-to-place international teachers, we have recruited from Jamaica, the Dominican Republic, Guyana, and Sierra Leone that have come to us as well. So, we have cast an international net as far as we can possibly go.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, sir.
Mr. Jenkins, I appreciate all this information. It's valuable. It's good.
Thank you.
I was just curious, that when I went, when I was reading this, I thought about gender. And I think I know the answer to this, in fact, I know the answer to it, so I shouldn't even ask. However, you know, it's important for all of us in the school business to be in schools.
Yes, sir.
You know what I'm saying? At one time or another in our lives, you know, just like, I couldn't imagine being an airplane pilot and never having any experience, and getting behind the wheel and, you know, the cockpit and try to take off. Having said that, I visit a lot of elementary schools. In fact, I work in a lot of elementary schools. And a lot of, a lot of the students look at me and say, "You're a man. Why are you, you know, you're, what are you doing here?" I've never had a man teacher. And, you know, I think it's important for our, the little ones, you know, to be exposed to not just females. And I think females are great. I'm not saying anything, you know, my mother was a female. I love females. However, you know, I think, and I don't know how hard it is to get elementary school teachers, you know, males. But I know you have a lot on you. I understand. But I think, you know, we need more men in elementary school in particular. And I think it's probably, the ratio would probably be nine to one, I would think, or even higher.
Yes, sir. Ms. Waits and I were actually having a conversation when the question was asked about that, that it is probably 90% are going to be female and 10% are probably going to be male. Now, statistically, I can't give you that right off the top of my head, but I can.
No, that's fine. I understand. I got you. But it's just amazing when you go into a classroom, just like I was subbing one day, and the teacher left a note. She said, "I just want to let you know that two of the students said they never had a man teacher, and they don't even want to be in the classroom." But of course, you know, they changed their mind when they met me. Everything was fine.
I am sure. Everybody loves Dr. Caffaro.
It's the candy you provide.
Yeah. If you historically look at college enrollment for education, you will see that it is on a downward spiral. It is, we have more people, I think, according to the latest SARA report, there are almost 7,000 teacher vacancies that are turning over that cannot be filled through the traditional route. That's why, if you're looking pace, the numbers are going up. ABCTE, alternative certification, you'll see the last that just passed at the State Department is allowing individuals to enter into the education program that came through a traditional route, that haven't been able to pass the Praxis examination. So, the State Department is little by little trying to turn it around. But one of the biggest hindrances, which is something that has lately been addressed, is salary. When you look at starting salaries for those that leave a four-year institution, education is way down there. Now, it's a 190-day job is what is argued every now and then. It's not a full-time, year-round job. But I would disagree with that when you look at how many after-school hours are put in for those 190 days of instruction. But once salaries start to rise, if you'll look at, I was showing Mr. Price, the Call Me Mister program that's been implemented at Coastal Carolina, when you look at their pictures, now, that's for all four years, 17. 17 are in that program. And that's it. It's not just a Georgetown thing. It's a nationwide society thing. We have got to make education more attractive to individuals. Okay, I'll mop my soapbox and go on to adept. For the 2021 school year, we had a total of 162 teams. We had 35 induction. That would be first-year teachers that are going through the induction process with a mentor that would be supplied. We had 36 annual. Those are individuals that are going through the formal evaluation process that is required for the State Department to continue in the education program. The next you see are annual veterans. Annual veterans are those individuals that are coming to South Carolina with at least three years of teaching experience. In another state, and South Carolina requires that they go through an abbreviated evaluation process for their first year that they're here. And then, the 85 are recertifications. Recertification is the, what the State Department requires a teacher to go through every five years in order to maintain their teaching certificate. It requires a more solidified evaluation process than just the standard SLOGBE once every five years. And look at the jump from last year to this year. So, now, we're at 215 with one less staff member. 71 induction, 35 annual, 10 annual veteran, and 99 recertification. So, we're at 215. One of the big things that we have pushed is the number of mentors that we have. We have 217, I'm very happy to say. For all induction-level teachers, a certified, trained mentor is required, but not just for the induction-level teachers, also for any college placement, senior intern, junior intern, or sophomore intern that we have requires a trained mentor. Now, one of the things that we are trying to do is partner with our Institutes of Higher Education in the local area. Where we're excelling, where other school districts, well, I shouldn't say this out loud, where other school districts are falling behind, is the amount of trained mentors that we have, because there's no money involved in that. Teachers are building their own profession pretty much out of the goodness of their heart, because the only thing the Institute of Higher Education gives them is one free voucher for a free class. There is no money that's attached to that. But thankfully, you all approved a $500 bonus for all senior-level interns that will pay in addition to any supplement that the Institute of Higher Education may have, because you're finding that a lot of these senior-level mentors that are mentoring somebody from Coastal or College of Charleston or Francis Marion are actually giving that teaching voucher for a free class to their intern. So, again, it's just teachers helping to build other teachers. So, my hat's off to you guys for allowing us to do that, and hopefully, next year, we can make $500 more. And just letting you know, of that 217, 53 of them were trained this summer. So, hats off to the adept office. And I think that's it for my presentation. Any other questions?
Just out of curiosity, how long is that training?
The training, it's a three-day training.
That's right.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to say that when you look at the teaching fellows, when we're talking about people going into the profession, and you look at the teaching fellows, they're not representative of either gender or either the minority race. There's so few of our young people that are choosing that option, that if we can do anything to, you know, help our young people see, it is a great pathway. But the teaching fellows' pictures from all over our state aren't representative of what we would like to see come back to us as a district.
Yes, ma'am. And we're trying to reach out in every way. We're all about teamwork. If there's something that we can do better, and you can show us, or you have your connections, like we met with Mr. Neal a while back, and just anything that you can do to help foster and funnel, we're all open.
Absolutely. And we are as a whole.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, still moving along. We have the money, folks. Lisa Johnson, and Naseem Sada, and Mr. Mark. I don't know if that friend shared a what. So, I'll just leave it as first name.
Good evening, Chairman Lance, Superintendent Price, members of the board, members of the cabinet. I appreciate the opportunity tonight to share with you an enrollment update as of the 14th day of school for this year. At this point, I do feel that it is important to acknowledge how thoroughly impressed I am with our school administrative teams, and just how grateful I am for the professionalism and perseverance of our amazing family of attendants and power school clerks. They continue to wear many hats and have been absolutely instrumental in this process. This process was no simple task, and I applaud all of their efforts. This year, we'd like to provide a breakdown of our enrollment counts by area. And on each of these slides, you'll notice that the categories up at the top, from left to right, are the 22-23 projected. Those are the projections that we created last year based off of our 135-day counts. The 22-23 day 14 counts, those are the counts from this year. The 21-22 day 14 counts, those are the day 14 counts from last year. The day 14 enrollment comparison numbers, that's a comparison of last year's day 14 counts compared to this year's day 14 counts. And then, finally, the projected versus the day 14 counts, and that is a comparison of our projections from 135 compared to this year's day 14 counts. To point out a few highlights this year, looking at Andrews, in the Andrews area, if you notice, the day 14 enrollment comparison of Andrews High School, there is an increase in enrollment based off of those numbers. And the same for our projected versus the day 14 for Andrews High School as well. From the Carvers Bay area, you'll notice that Brown's Ferry Elementary, Carvers Bay High School, both show an increase in enrollment as of day 14 from last year to this year. And then, you'll notice as well that Pleasant Hill, Carvers Bay High, Carvers Bay Middle, and the area as a whole show an increase in enrollment compared to our projected numbers from day 14 of last year, or day 14 of this year. In the Georgetown-area schools, you'll notice that day 14 enrollment comparison numbers at Georgetown High School, there's an increase in enrollment in those two numbers, as well as Kensington Elementary. And then, the projected versus the day 14, Kensington Elementary and McDonald Elementary both show an increase in enrollment based off those projections. In the Waukamaw-area schools, you'll see that the day 14 enrollment comparisons, Waukamaw Elementary, Waukamaw Middle, and the area as a whole, all show an increase in enrollment on day 14 counts last year compared to this year. And then, the projected versus day 14, all schools, including the area, show an increase in, based off of what we thought those projections would be on day 14. Coastal Montessori Charter School, those day 14 enrollment comparisons, you can see that their numbers are up as well. And then, finally, kind of looking at the area totals, some of the highlights tonight, if you look at the day 14 enrollment comparison last year at this time, I don't think I was able to say that we had an increase in any of those. So, the day 14 enrollment comparison overall, total for the district, was a pleasant surprise. And the same with the projected versus the day 14. As you can see, those numbers are increased as well. And then, finally, looking at our area, the cert-up numbers were not included in those counts. And you just noticed that this year, based off of those comparison, our numbers are slightly down in cert-up. Last year, we did have a large cert-up enrollment at 287, and this year, we're 254. And then, finally, our 45th day is coming up on October 18th this year. These counts will give us a more precise data, and our funding will be adjusted according to those numbers. We'll continue to ensure that these numbers are accurate. And based off of this, are there any questions for me at this time?
I'd like to address this to Mr. Price. Mr. Shedd, this is good. You know, he's got a three-year study there, two years. I'd like to see, like, over the last five, seven years, you know, where were we, you know, pre-pandemic, where we are. Of course, I see where we are now, but I don't know that this number of 10,000 sticks in my head. I thought we had about 10,000 students at one time. We did, didn't we?
Yes.
Okay. And what happened to them? Where'd they go? What happened? I mean, I'm not, that's a rhetorical question, obviously.
Population changes, I think, in our area.
Right. In some of the census data that we've been reviewing, it shows that the county is growing as far as population goes. But the number of school-age children... But the number of school-aged children is not. It's actually declining. So as more and more people move into our county, they don't have school-aged children. So the availability of housing is being absorbed by families who do not have school-aged children. So that's a challenge that we're facing.
And I get that, I understand it, but, you know, just only, only like thirty or forty or fifty miles north of here, build more schools. And those schools now, the intermediate schools, the high, they're huge. And they're busting out of the seams. And that's, you know, I'm not talking three, four hundred miles away. I mean, that's our neighbor over there. And I know we can not solve that, but I think that's a problem, or an issue, rather, that County Council or other groups, you know, need to really look into. Because that, the movement of population is just a manifestation of what's going on. We really need to look and see, just like Mr. Bob gave that intensive report. I'd like to see a real intensive report dealing with why is our population not growing? I guess, you know, industry or whatever, but, you know, Ori County, they had the lowest wages paid to people in the nation for a number of years. And I guess that was with the tourism stuff, they didn't pay them much money, but I don't know what's going. I understand, but my issue is this is a great place to live. And I just don't get why we're not building the population. And even the Waukamaw neck has not busted out of the seams. I mean, look at the data you shared tonight. You know, I think that's something that people really look at and say, well, gee. And maybe it's because the housing, you know, it was up to, it was up to some people, you know, the squirrels and the foxes and everything else would have nowhere to live because everything would be cut down. And, you know, with, and I know I'm getting off on a tangent here, but it's all interrelated. I've been thinking about this a lot, and I just don't understand why our county is not growing as much. I know we're not Ori County, but we're pretty darn good here.
Oh, I absolutely agree, and I think you hit the nail on the head, Dr. Caffaro. If you, if you look at those population trends and growth, and then also match that with housing development expansion, you will see that it's very different in our neighboring districts compared to us with the number of housing developments that are going up. But that's something that we can definitely look into and see if we can find some data for you.
The industry, that's what's taking people there.
Right.
There are some studies out there. There have been at least two since I've been on the board. Whether or not I can put my hand on that, I'm not sure. But it does a pretty good job, especially out the way I live in the western part of the county. And they basically show that over a period of time, it's an un-growth area. And what you said about the people who go to the neck, well, somebody said they just don't have school-aged kids still coming in there. They come over there to finish out the rest of their retirement and have a great time, which most of them I know do. But we have zero growth. We are a county, and like I said, I'm trying to remember, Coastalville, one of those study. But there are some out there, I don't know, I may have it home in that office, I'm not sure. But the information is out there, all right? The questions you ask have been asked for a long time, okay? And I don't really remember them giving me a reason, because I was one of, well, are we dying? Because like somebody suggested, the population of the entire county might be growing. But I know for a fact we are not contributing any growth in the western part of the county. You know, they get out of school and they take their babies somewhere else, okay? Or when they come back, they come back to enjoy it, all right? And it's hard to get them to come back. And like, you know, I can just look at the little community that I'm in, you know, and think about all those people I could go and ask questions, they're not around. One of the last one we had, I think she was about 101, we just buried her a couple of weeks ago. And there are two others in the nineties, and a couple in the late eighties. When they go, that's it, that's a whole, whole generation that I can't get information from. Some of those people could tail back. And in the Presidell area, those people just decided to go, the kids don't come back.
I think the Bunnell Foundation did a study recently, and they wanted to know what Georgetown could do to make it more attractive to young people. Because obviously, if you get the young people to come back home and work and have fun, then they will have families here. But that's a big problem, young people don't want to come back to Georgetown. So that's part of the issue.
But there are not a lot of positions, are there?
There aren't, exactly, there's no, there's housing issues, there's workplace issues, et cetera.
Especially if you go into school and get a degree, and the service industry does not really provide that much financial incentive.
Right, right.
Is the hospital here still delivering babies? Because at one time, they don't do that.
No.
You go to Waukamaw?
I'd love to, you know, you wait until.
And the reason why I think it's a worthy discussion, because we're talking about enrollment, which, I mean, I hate to say it, but, you know, that's money, money for the, for the community, for the school district, and you've got that, I'll stop after this, beautiful manufacturing center we have. I mean, that is a wonderful facility, state-of-the-art. Then after they finish there, what are they supposed to do? Go to Charleston, Spartanburg, and, you know, relocate and start their families there, I guess. Thank you.
That's what they're like.
We did an infrastructure several years ago. They had brought all the community resources together. And you can remember, we did the infrastructure and kind of study here. And the western part of the county, it would have exploded had it been able to go over the river on the western part of the county. But there was no budge to be able to do that. And that's where the growth that they projected us to go. And the infrastructure and roads and that kind of thing then would have allowed us an outlet to go right across the river there to our neighboring county. And after that, they had predicted that if we didn't make that western, you were on the board then, Dr. Lance, if we hadn't made that western move over that way, that we were going to be kind of without growth. And so that never happened, and that's where we were. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Dr. Lance, Chairman Dr. Lance, Board Members, and Mr. Price. Tonight is a new way of looking at our school spending. It's been in place since 2018, 19, and it was mandated by the Every Student Succeeds Act, or ESA. States are required for all local public school districts to publish the per pupil expenditures by school at the school level and by source of fund. The State Department actually chose to report our per pupil, as well as all other schools and districts, on the SC Report Card website. So that's where previous data is housed at this time. Just to kind of give you an overview, there is a huge Excel template that the State Department sends us, and we have to fill this in, take this out, add this back. I mean, it's a, it's a whole process that the State Department mandates so that all districts should look the same, should be calculated the same. So I did not even attempt to bring that to you tonight, but it's huge. It uses the ADM, you can go to the Brent, are you, okay, the slide. We brought you 2020 and 2021 tonight. We'll have 2022 right after the first of the year. So we'll bring that back to you then. It's based on the average daily membership for each school and for the district. And, you know, that is different than enrollment. That is, you know, you may have kids come and stay two weeks and leave, and we count them for the two weeks, but they're not enrolled any longer, so. And so the total average per pupil expenditure for the whole district is, was for 2020, 12,478, and then 2021, 13,226. Then we've got the high schools. For 2020, Andrews High, it was 12,784, 13,164 for 2021. Georgetown High, 11,728, and for 21, 12,710. Carvers Bay High, 2020, it was 15,405, and 2021, 16,534. And Waukamaw High, 10,283 for 2020 and 11,198 for 2021. Yes, sir.
What makes up the total average per pupil expenditure? Why are we seeing the differences?
Right, it's everything the district spends other than, and the state has excluded, adult education, not a part of it. Community services, like the school boat that we help the county do, those things are taken out because they have nothing to do with our school expenses. Also debt service, capital outlay, capital projects, and pupil activities. Those are all excluded, but everything else is included, local, state, and federal.
Local, state, and federal.
Yes, sir.
I'm talking, excuse me, that includes Title I, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Title I.
Title I? Oh, yeah, yeah.
This also includes ESSR.
ESSR, that was spent that year, yeah. So for our middle schools, Carvers Bay Middle, 11,680 in 2020, 12,625 in 2021. Georgetown Middle is 10,131, 10,850 in 2021. Rose Mary is 10,771 and was 11,479 for 21. And Waukamaw Middle was 10,976 for 20 and 12,508 for 21. There are a lot of reasons that it could vary. Some of the reason is that for 2021, with the ESSR money, we were able to keep our staff at its current level even though the ADM went down. So those are just one of the number of reasons. Okay, elementary. Andrews Elementary is 13,354 for 2020 and was 12,697 for 21. Brown's Ferry is 16,775, and 21 is 17,320. Kensington, 13,027, and 2021 was 14,357. And Maryvale, 12,891 for 2020, and 2021 is 13,724. McDonald was 14,120 in 2020 and 13,757 in 21. And Pleasant Hill was 15,895 in 2020 and 15,675 in 21. Plantersville was 28,572 in 2020 and 26,690 in 2021. Sampit, 14,842 in 2020 and 15,027 in 21. Waukamaw Elementary, 11,879 in 2020, 14,289 in 21. And Waukamaw Intermediate, 11,136 in 2020 and 12,649 in 21. And we did not include Coastal Montessori Charter School in this presentation because you don't make, this board doesn't make, and our district does not make those financial decisions on how that money is spent. They have their own, their own board. So that's, that's where we are for 20, and I think, Dr. Caffaro, you're right. I don't know that, I mean, I know there's some, some good information here and some good trends that we probably need to look into. It's difficult, though, with the ESSR money and the things that we went through in the last couple of years to really draw any real conclusions, but but it does reveal some patterns that I think will help us as we look at allocating monies in the future. Is there any questions or anything that you?
Patty, go ahead.
Do you think we have to take a very pointed look at the monies that we're spending per pupil? I can realize from this that where we had extra teachers, that we didn't take away, and our numbers were definitely different, that there were a little bit of difference. But when you look at stark differences in these amounts, then it certainly is something that is noteworthy for us to look at, whether it's physically feasible to keep going in that same direction when we can't have programs that we want on another list of things to have because of high, high expenditures per pupil. I certainly would like to see us take a look at that before we begin fiscal budget for next year.
And we are participating in a pilot program with Georgetown University. It's a Department, U.S. Department of Ed grant that they've gotten. And the idea is to plot our per-school expenditures as well as the student outcomes so that we could see, you know, this school's spending less money, but the students are doing very well. This school's not spending, or they're spending a lot of money, and those students are not doing as well. So hopefully, January, when we get our 22 numbers, I'd like to bring that back and share that with you. Is there anything I can answer or bring back to the Board? Thank you.
Thank you.
After the burn, huh? Bring us the good news.
Good evening Chairman Lance, Superintendent Price, Board Members. I'll present to you tonight our Spring 22 State Assessment Data. And I am let you know that EFC has been added. I know when you got your board package, it was not there, it was still embargoed. But as of yesterday afternoon, that embargoment has been lifted, and it's been released to the press and to the public. First, we'll look at SC Ready, ELA in math, and SC Pass science, a three-year analysis. The first slide shows you an overall overview of the district's scores for SC Ready and SC Pass over three years. We had improvement in all for 2022 versus 2021. However, we're not quite back where we were in 2019, pre-COVID. This is SC Ready, ELA. We had seven schools, as well as the district overall, that are above our 2021 performance percentages. The district's overall is not quite where we were in 2019. We fell slightly short, we were only, we were six tenths of a percentage point away from where we were in 2019, 40.6 compared to 41.2.
away from where we were in 2019, 40.6 compared to 41.2. We had five schools, as you'll notate by the green circles, that have surpassed their 2019 scores this spring of '22. And then we have three schools, Coastal Montessori, Walkham Mall Elementary, and Walkham Mall Intermediate, fourth and fifth, that were above the state's 22 scores. And I have tried to let you have a visual of that. That's the orange line that's going horizontal. And that state average was 48.9. For our middle school ELA, three-year analysis, all but one of our schools, as well as the district overall, were above our 21 performance levels. We had two schools who are above their 2019 scores. Carvers Bay Middle and Walkham Mall Middle School. And we have three schools who are above the state's 2022 scores. The state, again, is the orange horizontal line, and they were, the state was at 44.73. Coastal Montessori, Walkham Mall Intermediate, and Walkham Mall Middle were above the state. Our math, elementary. We had all but two schools, as well as the district's overall, that were above our 21 performance levels. We had two schools, Planters, Pleasant Hill, and Walkham Mall Intermediate, who were above their 2019 scores. Again, those are the green circles. Then we had three schools that were above the state's 22 score. The orange horizontal, which is 45.9 for the state. Those three schools were Pleasant Hill, Walkham Mall Elementary, and Walkham Mall Intermediate, fourth and fifth. Our middle school math. We had five schools, as well as district overall, that were above our 21 performance levels. We had one school, Carvers Bay Middle, that surpassed their 2019 scores. That's the green circle. And then we had two schools, Walkham Mall Intermediate and Walkham Mall Middle, who surpassed the state's 22 percentage of 32.27. Any questions so far?
These are all aggregate scores, right?
Yes. These scores represents all student tested, not your 45th day, which we'll see on the report card. We also break it down by grade level. Your third grade is a three-year, and I tried to denote it by colors so you could see the different schools. On your left, again, your green circles are the schools that have surpassed their 2019 scores. And then to your left, the three schools that have the boxes around them, they are at or above the state's 2022 score, which is 48%. And for this, the orange line is now vertical, so that you'll know the state. You kind of have a visual for that. We had all but one school above our 2021 performance levels. For fourth grade ELA, we had eight schools above our 21 performance levels. We had three schools who surpassed their 2019 scores. Andrews Elementary, Plantersville Elementary, and Pleasant Hill Elementary. Then we had one school that was above the state's 22 score. The state's was 50.4%, and that school was Walkham Mall Intermediate. They were at 63.6. Fifth grade ELA. We had eight schools that were above their 21 performance level, and one school that met at their 21. So they were even with their 21 performance level. We had six schools that surpassed their 2019 scores. Andrews Elementary, Kensington, Stampet, Plantersville, Walkham Mall Intermediate, and Coastal Montessori. Then we have three schools who are above the state's 22 score. The state was 48.3%. Those three schools were Kensington, Walkham Mall Intermediate, and Coastal Montessori. Sixth grade. We had four schools above our 21 performance level. Two schools surpassed their 2019 scores, Rosemary Middle and Carvers Bay Middle. And two schools were above the state's 22 score. The state was 41, 45.1%. That was Coastal Montessori and Walkham Mall Intermediate. And again, that's the orange line that you'll see to give you the visual. Seventh grade, we had three schools above the 2021 performance levels. One school surpassed their 2019 score. That was Walkham Mall Middle. And then we had two schools above the state's 22 score. The state was at 43.2%. That was Coastal Montessori and Walkham Mall Middle. Eighth grade. We had three schools above the 21 performance level, and one school was at their same performance level as last year, year before last. We had three schools who surpassed their 2019 scores. Georgetown Middle, Walkham Mall Middle, and Coastal Montessori. And we had two score, two schools that were above the state's 22 scores. Coastal Montessori and Walkham Mall Middle. Any questions for ELA?
I'd like to make a comment. You know, when I look at these scores, okay? I think about the student readiness, okay? And I'm speaking of like pre-kindergarten. Everybody, this is a public school. We have public schools. We take anybody who comes in. Some students are ready to learn, as you know, some of them are not. And that's why when I look at these scores, I take them with not a grain of salt, but a ton of it, because I understand that a lot of these children come from very difficult backgrounds. A lot of people don't want to hear that stuff, but that's too bad because they've never been in schools. They don't work day-to-day in the schools like the teachers do. And the challenges that they have in there are just astronomical, I know. And it really, it hurts me so when I see this, and then people who are on the street, and they don't know any better, you know? They look at these things and say, well, the public schools are failing. They're failing. Well, you know something? If I had a bunch of scholars, if I could go around to all the public schools and just pull out those who are ready to learn, those who have been taught so much before they even enter pre-kindergarten or whatever, we'd have astronomical scores. But it doesn't work like that in public schools. And I'm not making excuses. This is reality. Would you agree with that, Dr. Barrinow?
I would say that this is your achievement, and where you need to see our growth is in our student growth, because we, we should show our students are growing. We know we're doing what we're supposed to do.
And I understand that, but is everybody ready to go? Is everybody, when they start school, or they enter the first day of school, are they equally prepared to learn?
No.
Okay, that's right. Thank you.
That's where we take them and we move them because we intervene and we provide differentiation.
That's exactly.
To get them where they need to be.
Exactly, exactly. But, you know, everybody, people out there who don't know anything about test scores and so forth, they think, well, you know something? Everybody should be at that 90th percentile. And see, my question is where, what about you? You know, those who say those things, what about you? Where were you when you were in school? Thank you.
Mr. Caffaro, may I make a comment? You are exactly correct. Because our teachers, they have a lot on their plate. When the kid walks in the door, no matter what grade, they are required by law to teach at that grade level, and also to pull them up wherever they are. Teachers, I admire them. They have a lot on them.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, and you know, I'd like to, what is that? Can you see it? Do you know what that is?
To me, it's a right angle.
Yeah, it's a seven.
Backwards.
That's, yes, that's right. Because those children who are dyslexic, when I was in there with them teaching the math, that's what they, that, some of them showed. And I think, I look at these test scores. And, you know, I almost want to cry when I say, what about this kid? When he, when he takes the test, or she takes the test? What, how are they going to score? I pretty much can predict it. And I appreciate it, Mr. Gaskins. You're absolutely right. Thank you, thank you.
But that's where our small successes come from, because these are the numbers, what, when the schools, they're diving deeper to look at the individual students so they can celebrate the successes with those students, regardless of where you see it as achievement or you see it as growth. They, they're, they're still a student connected to this number. And until we realize, and we realize that those kids, when we're at the school, we have to see who those kids are, not just the number that they are.
And I agree. And what Mr. Gaskin said, I want to reiterate that again. These teachers are really working very, very, very hard in those classrooms. And, you know, I would just hate for the public or anybody else to look and say, you know, well, you know, what are they doing in the classrooms or whatever? I mean, it's, it's just an astronomical job.
Moving right along, SC Ready math. We had seven schools that were above, sorry, I apologize. Seven schools above our 21 performance. We had two schools that surpassed their 2019, Brown's Ferry and Pleasant Hill. We had two schools that are above the state 22 score percentages. The state was 51% for 22. We had Pleasant Hill and Walkham Mall Elementary that were above the state. For math, we had six schools above their 21 performance level, and three schools that surpassed their 2019 scores. Plantersville, Pleasant Hill, and Walkham Mall Intermediate. And two schools were above the state's 22 scores. The state's 22 score average was 43.4% met and above. Pleasant Hill and Walkham Mall Intermediate were above that. Math, fifth grade. We had eight schools above the 21 performance levels. Four schools surpassed their 2019 scores. Kensington, McDonald, and Walkham Mall Intermediate. And two schools were above the state's met and above. The state was at 43.3%. Kensington and Walkham Mall Intermediate surpassed that. Sixth grade. We had four schools above the 21 performance level. Two schools surpassed their 2019 scores. Carvers Bay Middle and Walkham Mall Intermediate. And Walkham Mall Intermediate with 64.4% was above the state's met and above, which was 35.7. Seventh grade math. We had two schools that were above their 21 performance, and one school that was back at their 21 performance level. We didn't have any schools at the seventh grade level who were at or above their 2019. Walkham Mall Middle was above the state's. They were at 43.6% met and above, and the state was 30.9% met and above. Eighth grade math. We had four schools above the 21st, the 21 performance levels. We had one school who surpassed their 2019 scores. That was Coastal Montessori. And we had two schools above the state's met and above. The state was at 30.2%. Coastal Montessori and Walkham Mall Middle were above that. Any questions on math? Now we're going to look at our subgroups. For SC Ready ELA, all of our subgroups performed above their 2021 performance levels. We had two subgroups that performed above their 2019 scores. Those are the two green circles. Your special services are your disabled population and your Hispanic population. For math, we had six subgroups who were above their 21 performance level. We didn't have any subgroups at or above their 2019. You can see we've made improvements from 20, from 21. However, we're not quite back to where we were at our pre-COVID performance levels for math subgroups. Any questions for SC Ready ELA or math? SC Pass is our science for elementary. That's our fourth grade students. We had seven schools, as well as the district's overall, that were above our 21 performance percentages. We had two schools who surpassed their 2019 scores. That's Andrews Elementary and Pleasant Hill Elementary. And we had two schools who were above the state's met and above. 46.4% was the state. Pleasant Hill and Walkham Mall Intermediate surpassed that. And again, the orange horizontal line shows you where the state was for this year. SC Pass for middle school is your sixth grade students. We had four schools, as well as the district's overall, that were above our 21 performances. We had one school that surpassed their 2019 scores. That was Carvers Bay Middle. And we had one school that was above the state's 22 scores. The state was at 45.6% met and above. Walkham Mall Intermediate surpassed that with 62% met and above. And we'll look at our subgroups for SC Pass. For our subgroups, our fourth grade and sixth grade are combined. We had six subgroups who scored above their 21 performance level. We did not have any subgroup at or above our 2019 performance levels. Again, we've made improvements from 21. However, not quite back to where we were pre-COVID, 2019. Any questions for SC Ready or SC Pass? Now we're going to look at EOC. I will, do want to say, we do have USC history, ESC data. Please keep in mind, if you recall, US history, we did not use that 20% end, of course, because it was considered, they came out and said it was considered a field test this year. So it will be reported on report cards, and we are provided that data now. It will not be counted in our ratings for our report cards. Also, when you look at this overall for the district, keep in mind, in 2020, we did not have ESCs due to COVID. Overall, we had gains over 2021. We're not quite where we were in 2019 at pre-COVID. But we did have gains. 6.8% increase in English II, 4.92% points increase from Algebra I, 12.1 in Biology, and then US history was 5.79. For Algebra I, all schools, including the district overall, averaged was above our 2021 performance levels. We had five schools who scored at or above their 2019 scores. Carvers Bay High, Rosemary Middle, Georgetown Middle, Carvers Bay Middle, Walkham Mall Middle, and Coastal Montessori. We had five schools that scored above the state's 22 score. The state was at 65.99% for a passing rate. Ron McNair, George, I apologize. Now, Rosemary, Georgetown, Carvers Bay, Walkham Mall Middle, and Coastal Montessori scored above the state's 22. Average of the 65.99. And again, that orange line is where the state failed. And you'll notice the orange columns above that line. So definitely something to celebrate for our Algebra I. I would like to put in a plug that that's definitely, I feel, is that intervention we had geared towards those Algebra I students. That was something that we focused on, and that we definitely discussed and made sure we were pushing. So it was definitely, and I know that the principals, their goal was to improve at least 5%. I believe that was in their strategic plans as well. English II, we had three schools, as well as the district overall, above the 2021 performance. If you'll recall, in 2019, it was English I. We did have a few English II's, but it's not significant enough that we could add as a comparison year. We did have one school that scored above the state's 2022 score. Passing rate for the state was 84.32. Walcomile High's is 9.79. I apologize. Maybe you can, now you have a visual to my conversation. Biology. Two schools, as well as the district overall, were above 2021. We didn't have any school at or above our 2019 performance. Walcomile High did score above the state's passing rate. The state's passing rate is 57.48. Walcomile High's was 71. Again, the orange line shows you the state's, the orange horizontal, shows you the state's performance. For US history, we had three schools, as well as the district's overall, that were above the 2021 performance. We had one school that scored at or above their 2019 scores, that was Carvers Bay High School. And we had one school that scored at or above the state. The state's passing rate, which is denoted by the horizontal orange line, was at 56.45%. Any questions on end course? We'll look at subgroups for EOC now. For Algebra I, we had six subgroups that scored above their 21 performance levels. We had four subgroups, males, gifted and talented, special services or disabled, and African-Americans that scored above their 2019 scores. We didn't have any subgroups that were at or above the state's average for 22. For biology, we had five subgroups that scored above 2021 performance levels. We had one subgroup, our special services or disabled population, that scored above their 2019 scores. And we had one subgroup that scored above the state's 2022 score. Females, our females are scoring at 60.51% passing rate. The state's is 60.42%. For English II, we had five subgroups that scored above their 21 performance level. We had three subgroups that scored above the state's 22 passing rate. Our multi-language learners. Our subgroup for them is at 78.26% passing rate. The state's was 77.84%. Our gifted and talented is at 100%. The state was at 99.14. And I've made an error and would have to let you know what that second one should be. I repeated myself for that. US history, all subgroups scored above the 2021 performance levels. We had five subgroups that scored above the state's passing rate for 2022. Our multi-language learners were at 53.57. The state's was at 25.39. Our males are at 57.86%. The state was 57.74%. Our, that's a mistake, I apologize. Our Hispanics are at 57.45%. The state was 49.28%. Whites are, are 72.36% and the state is 69.14%. And I will give those two corrections to you.
Just looking, just looking at, at those scores, what conclusions could be made just looking at those scores? That, that particular slide? What, what conclusions?
Well, we're doing something right with our multi-language learners. If we're above the state and we've surpassed our 21, we're not quite where we were in 2019. Our males and females are almost performing at the same for 22. If you do a five-point error, give or take, plus or minus. Where aren't our gifted and talented? We have surpassed our 21, but we're not where we were in 2019. Special services is growing. We're not right where we were in 2019. For our Hispanic population, they are growing over 21, but we're not quite where we were in 19. Our white population, we've increased, but again, we're not quite where we were. Our African-American, we, we are above 21, but we're not quite where we were. And if you look just at column-wise, if you just compare that, you can see that your Caucasians and your gifted and talented are outperforming your other group, your other subgroups.
Could there be other factors like not having, not having books in the home, people reading to the children? The, the lag from June to August? The educational level of parents? Are, are those, are those factors involved as well, possibly?
They could be, but they're not calculated in a score.
I'm not, no, but they're, they're, they're calculated as far as human prowess is concerned.
They are.
You know, just like, look at, look at the gifted and talented.
But as a score, it's not calculated in.
I understand that, I understand that. Look at the gifted and talented. Those kids, you know, I mean, they, it, it, it's like the, the star athletes, you know, those star athletes who, who can run the, you know, the 100-yard dash in, you know, 11 seconds or something. Look, look at that now. If you had a school full of those, and see, that's what a lot of these so-called pundits talk about, that everybody should be scoring in that GT level, which reality sets in. None, I don't know, if we took tests here, how many would be GT? I know I wouldn't.
I think a takeaway from that is that with a classroom teacher and the students all making those improvements over virtual learning and the sporadic learning that we had, that you can see the value of a face-to-face teacher in a classroom. And I saw that throughout, even when you looked at the third grade scores and you realized those babies hadn't had a classroom experience for two years in the foundations of reading and numeracy. And then you look at the scores all the way up without that foundation. When we see that maybe we aren't where we were in 2019, but we sure came a long way when we put that classroom teacher back in that room with those children. So I applaud the teachers that we had children who came back to school who weren't used to the sitting there and the stamina of a day of doing instruction because of the past two years where we hadn't had it. And now we've got them back in our mode of where they're going to build that stamina again. And though we may not have been where we were in 2019, we came a long way. And I applaud teachers because they made a big difference in the lives of those children.
And we can also say, even throughout, we've seen where we've actually surpassed or met our 2019. So in areas, we have came back, in other words. And we're definitely on the right track where we're, where we're headed.
Especially with the interventions that are being done, where you're focusing on the greatest need and the students that are, have fallen so far behind. I think that's really critical.
Yes.
I have a question, and maybe not for you, but maybe for some of the other district staff, is that did the students perform as you predicted based on what you were doing with, with all the remediation, with what you're seeing with iReady? Was, what, what are the surprises and takeaways?
So I, I think one of the things that you can see from this, if you look at the state's results as a whole, were very similar. We bounced back much more significantly with ELA than we did with math. And there's been a lot of discussion about why is that so? And there's some theories out there that, you know, when you're at home and you're trying to learn virtually, when all else fails, you can read with your student. And the more you read, the better reader you become, the more you improve on your comprehension. Math, if you don't know it, it's a little bit harder to teach and to learn math versus reading and literacy. So numeracy is much more challenging than, than reading literacy is. And so there's a theory about that. So it, it doesn't surprise me to see us closing that gap much faster with ELA than what we're doing with math. The big question when we were coming through the pandemic is we were unsure of how much of a setback we were going to experience as a result of the pandemic. And I believe it was Dr. Lance who said, they'll bounce back, they always do. And what we've seen is in ELA, that's exactly what they've done. So we were in this pandemic with inconsistent education for, for the better part of two years. And we've already closed that gap and in many places, we've passed it. With math, it's going to take us a little bit more time, but with the intentional work that our teachers and our interventionists are doing, I think we are continuing to identify specific areas where we have gaps versus where we are versus where we should be. And our work with iReady helps us, especially in grades through, three through eight, really focus on the areas where we have deficiencies and pour into that. And so that's what our teachers are doing a lot of, is using those formative assessments to then plan collaboratively and to intentionally address those areas. With our EOCs, it's a little bit harder because those students who take EOCs this year, it'll be a different batch that takes them next year. And with our iReady, and this is what Dr. Barino focused on earlier, we're able to focus and celebrate growth, kind of like what you said, Dr. Cafaro. We, we take all students when they come to us, all shapes, all sizes, all abilities. And we give them a quality education. And I just want to echo what many of you have already said, is that we have got an incredibly talented and dedicated group of teachers who are pouring into our students. They know our students have got some ground to make up, but they're all committed to seeing it through. And if we continue to do that and focus intentionally on the areas where we're falling short, I have all the confidence in the world that we will continue to close that gap and surpass our pre-pandemic levels.
I also, parents are scared of, they call it the today math or the new math. All parents can help the children read, but when you sit down and they see this new kind of math, and it wasn't like the kind they had in school, they, they will tell you, I can't help with the math.
Well, it's, math is math, but the way you teach it is, is different. I was a math teacher. And I remember when my girls were, were coming up and they came home and I said, well, this is how you do this problem. And they said, no, Dad, that's not the way the teacher taught me to do it. And I said, well, I don't know how to teach you how to do it. We're going to have to get the teacher on the phone or schedule a conference or something. So it, it's a different way, but there's, there's science behind it. And it's about quantifying and thinking critically, not just a process skill. And so that's where it's different than how we learned whenever we were coming up. So, yes, ma'am.
Anybody else? To answer your question, Dr. Cafaro, you've got a little time on it. You were interested in knowing whether or not it's the parents. We are speculating, why not do a study? You, you can do another, another complicated study on that, and it'll give you the answers. Of course, you know, if you want to hire me, hey, I'll take on the task.
I'll tell you what I like to do.
Because it's time consuming.
And, and I, I do this, Dr. Lance, that's a great point. I go to Coastal every now and then to their library. And I look at dissertations that, that are written. And you get a lot of information from that. And, and just like the, people call it the old effective school research, it is still applicable today. Larry Lazott and Ron Edmund stuff about effective schools. It, it's still applicable today. So I, I agree with you, that's a good point.
And, you know, to, everybody was kind of in essence, kind of knocking the mathematics performance down in the lower grades. But what was interesting to me, I caught my fancy, is look at the end of, end of score tests for Algebra I. Those were the same people down there in the lower grades, weren't you anything? And all of a sudden, bingo, they put them in Algebra I and they're performing, hmm, something is going on. All right? If they can do that abstract math, so much better than they were doing in the lower grades. But just think about that, I just kind of ran that in my head, I said, wait a minute, now, maybe not. They can tap off that algebra like that. Obviously, they're the same kids, right? On the snake side? Have they gotten smarter? When in reality, we said they didn't know.
We've done a fine job between elementary and high school, that's why they scored so well.
Thank you, that was a great report, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, it's 20 minutes to eight now.
Not all?
I can't help it. I can't help it.
This is work. It's a work session, right?
Work session.
Thank you.
Ready for me?
Yes, sure. All right, Ms. Ms. Waits?
All right.
He said it's the workers' question.
She's working.
So work it fast.
I will. Good evening, Chairman Lance, members of the board, Mr. Price, district staff and guests. At the conclusion of the community meetings held by Mr. Price, a survey was sent out to parents, employees, students and community members, asking if they were in favor of pursuing a modified year-round calendar or continuing with a traditional calendar. The window for the survey was from June 8th through August 31st. A video presentation was attached, a sample calendar was included, and it was advertised through email, the district website and social media. The next slide will give an overall total of responses that were received, but please keep in mind that a lot, a lot of these responses were duplicates. So in the following slides, we will see the actual numbers that were weeded out. So the breakdown is as follows. Parents and guardians were, the responses were 64.8%. For district employees, 22.8%. Students, 7.2%. And community members were 5.2%. On the next slide, we'll see that there were a total of 1,735 responses for parents. 58% were in favor of a modified year-round calendar. 42% in favor of continuing with a traditional calendar. Employees, there was a total of 597 responses. 64% in favor of a modified year-round calendar. 36% in favor of continuing with a traditional calendar. Student responses, there were 226. 34% were in favor of a modified year-round calendar and 66% in favor of continuing with a traditional calendar. Community members were 163 responses. 46% in favor of a modified year-round calendar. 54% in favor of continuing with a traditional calendar. Of the 2,721 clean responses, 57% were in favor of pursuing with a modified year-round calendar for 2023-24 and 43% in favor of continuing with a traditional calendar for the 23-24 school year. The calendar committee met. The consensus is to move forward with a modified year-round calendar. After discussing the calendar committee, after- After discussing the calendar committee recommends that the following calendar is presented to you for consideration. Calendar was also presented in cabinet, and it is being brought to you this evening for discussion. So with this draft, teachers will return on July 27th, which is the first green day in July. Students will return on August 3rd, which is the first, which is the red day in August. The end of the first quarter would be October 4th. We will have a week off in October. We would have the week of Thanksgiving off. The end of the second quarter and the first semester would be December 21st. The end of the third quarter would be March 14th. End of the fourth quarter and the last day of school would be May 24th. Any questions?
Who's on the calendar committee?
We have a high school teacher, middle, elementary principal, Dr. Gows, two parents, and another elementary staff member.
I have a question, Ms. Waits. With the community, no, with the employees, that included teachers and staff?
Yes ma'am.
The survey?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. Was there a breakdown among, between teachers and staff, or they were all?
We did not have that breakdown.
Okay.
Yes ma'am.
I have a question. We talked about this been for the use of remediation. I was very concerned that we only, the weeks that we have that are different, with Thanksgiving week, which you pretty much could say, there's not going to be a great deal of remediation. There's only, and there's the two weeks in Semester 1, but the only week in Semester 2 that I see is spring break.
Right.
I had a very difficult time understanding, with that long a time without a break, how that was going to affect remediation. And I didn't see any real benefits academically, the way it was broken down, except for the fact that we had the first semester ending by December 21st, which also troubled me, because that's pretty late before Christmas for exams. So I just asked those questions. I didn't see that having an academic impact, nor did I see it really being anything except just a very, I didn't see how that was going to make a benefit.
Yeah, I was looking at that too, in that if you're, if, again, we're talking about remediation, and if we just look at October, so you've got a week off in October, but if we're looking at the weeks off and kids wanting remediation, I mean, you've got a staff development day, but it'd be staff development, but that might be a day that kids come in, I mean, I don't know how to set it up. It would seem to me that in those, maybe not Thanksgiving week, and maybe not Christmas, but the October week, maybe these half staff development days, they might be more of student remediation than just, I mean, and I know staff development isn't a day off, I understand that, but somehow working in the remediation for the students, as Patty was saying.
The part of the proposal whenever we were presenting was, when you look at those weeks off, is to target a couple of days during that week where we would offer the intervention and the remediation. So those would not be scheduled work days for employees, so if they came in to work with students to do remediation or intervention, then we would pay them to come in on those days off. And we couldn't require students to attend on those days, we would invite students to attend on those days. And so rather than doing those intervention programs in the summertime, we would be doing them a couple of days during that week. So if a student is on track and exceeding and doing well, then they get those five days off. But if a student who is struggling and falling behind, they may be invited to come in instead of having five days off that week, they may have three days off that week and come in for intervention on one or two of those days while everyone else is off.
Would you plan for intervention during that Thanksgiving week?
I would, to try to do it the first couple of days before, which has traditionally been school days for everyone, before we get into family travel. So we would try to do that and offer it during that time as well, yes.
How about during spring break?
Same thing for spring break.
Because I was concerned about that gap between January until spring break.
Yeah, that's a lot.
It'd be great if there was another, another time period there that could be for remediation days.
In between the January and April.
And spring break.
Yeah, that's a long time.
That's a long stretch to, for a modified calendar.
Right.
I know typically, you would see, you know, a week at the end, toward the end of each nine weeks in a modified calendar.
And I have a question about that as well. I don't know how other schools do it, if you've talked to other districts that have done the modified calendar, but do they ever offer incentives to the students? I mean, obviously, the main incentive is to pick up your grade and to, you know, make improvements, but an incentive to come in those first few days in November, the first few days, maybe the last couple of days in January, I don't know, but, you know, most kids, they want the time off, even the students that are struggling. So how do we incentivize them to come in to take advantage of that?
And just knowing teachers, even without those days, if little Johnny is behind, I'm going to try and help them anyway. I mean, in our teachers, and we know the teachers in this county, they're going to help them anyway. We're going to do extra time during the day, you know, during lunch, after school, to bring those kids in. And you're right, maybe some type of incentive to say, hey, you know, if you come in these days, then these three or four who are having trouble, work with that. I mean, I don't know what exactly that would be, but, I mean, I just know the teachers are going to help kids anyway.
Right.
But, I mean, this would be another incentive if we're going to look at this calendar.
Right, and I'm not sure about incentives for students for coming in during those days, that's something I'll check into and find out. But I do know, in talking to others who've already moved to a modified calendar, some do offer interventions during those weeks and others do not. It's just, it's just a week off. So there's, there's no focus on intervention. And we thought it would be a good idea and a good opportunity to try to seize some of that time, rather than taking away from regular instruction to do some more work with students to try to close those gaps. So that's what we, our intent is to do, is to use those times strategically to plug in those gaps.
I think, you know, it would be wise for moving this forward, is that that intervention piece is a part of this calendar.
Yeah. And my other question is, you know, I'm assuming, and when y'all did this, of course, I wasn't here, although I watched, you know, was watching things very closely, but maybe, I lost my train of thought. All right, well, let me, let me, I'll come back to it.
What about the? Let me just preface what I'm about to say, because I don't care what kind of calendar you come up with, people are going to shoot holes in it. You know, it's just like any kind of schedule you come up with.
Every year.
Right. So having said that, the summer lag, the summer lag, you know, I'm looking at this, and, you know, when people look at modified year-round calendar, you know, when I think a year-round, I think some schooling might be going on, remediation or what have you, you know, during the summer time, maybe not the whole, but anyway, you know what I'm talking about.
Right.
And would we have summer school during the summer? I mean, you talk about a lag now, I'm looking at that calendar, June doesn't look like much, July doesn't look like much, and, you know, those students who were just barely hanging on, you know, with their fingernails like this, it's, it's a long stretch. And like I said, I don't care what kind of calendar you come up with, people are not going to agree with it, but that's my biggest concern as well, that all that remediation, the teaching and so forth, and then, because let's face it, some of our kids are not going to even read during the summer, unfortunately. It goes back to what we talked about earlier.
Typically with a year-round calendar, then students are in school at least some of every month. There's still only 180 days of school, but there, it's more spread out, more breaks throughout the year than even what this calendar shows. With a modified, that's the only exception to the mandatory start date that's allowed by law. And so we have to call it a modified year-round calendar, but there's no definition, the State Department doesn't define what a modified calendar is or is not, it just says that it starts before the 3rd Monday in August, and there's an encouragement to include interventions. And like I said, some districts do, some districts don't. This actually makes the summer shorter than a traditional calendar. It's about a week, a week and a half shorter than a traditional calendar. But we would still offer summer school, because even now, we offer some interventions and opportunities after school, and it's not enough. And so we have to offer those opportunities for students to go and recover, or retake what they were unsuccessful with during the school year. And so we would continue to do the summer school opportunities in the summer. But right now, when we look at content or credit recovery, we might be able to save some of that time throughout the school year, rather than waiting until the end of the semester or the end of the school year.
All right, I remember what I was going to ask. Now, this may sound silly, but it would be a district schedule. So if we're going to, we're going to have remediation on October 9th, 10th and 11th, every school in the district would offer that.
That's correct.
And then, do we have to look into transportation and those kind of things also?
We would.
Yeah.
Because we do it.
Because you have to, if you're going to invite the children, they need a way to get here. What about lunch, or meals, or that sort of thing? We'd have to look into that also.
Right, it depends on how long you keep them. If you keep them for a certain amount of time, then you have to feed them. And right now, we provide transportation during the summer right now to our program. So we, if we offer intervention during those weeks off, we would still do that. So that would mean additional pay for our drivers if they're running a modified route to go pick up students.
Right, and parents would want to know too, if you're keeping them because of childcare and other instances.
Right.
If you're going to keep them all day, we're going to keep them half a day, in some places we may keep them full day.
Correct. So I think what I'm hearing everyone say is, what you'd like to see before moving forward with putting this out for comment and consideration, is to go back and add some more detail to the interventions, and also look at some of these times that you all have mentioned to see if there's a way to balance it without throwing the calendar too far out of balance, and see what we can do based on your feedback before we put it out for comment. That's what I'm hearing everyone say.
I think it's, I think, I like this. I like the direction that we're going.
There's some tweaking that needs to be done.
We can certainly do that and bring back some more information to you at our next work session. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is a long time, January to spring break. But I would think we could do it there and there at least.
Thank you. Good evening Chairman Lance and ladies and gentlemen of the board. Tonight, it is my pleasure to review the district goals that were shared with you at the beginning of last school year, the progress made towards those goals, and an overview for the goals ahead in the 22-23 school year. Throughout this presentation, you will see that each goal is hyperlinked with supporting evidence, so that you may review more thoroughly to your liking. But for the sake of the, for sake of time, we will not be clicking on each link.
Does that make you happy?
As you may recall, the district-wide goals were divided into five specific categories: student achievement, operations, finance, human resources and communications. Let's first begin with student achievement. The first goal targeted district-wide professional learning opportunities for our district principals. Two years ago, a needs assessment and interest inventory was conducted among our elementary, middle and high school principals. The area of greatest need and interest that was identified focused on using data to inform decisions. After that, providing quality feedback to teachers was the next greatest area. In reviewing our protocols for providing feedback, we discovered that there were inconsistent expectations and strategies for doing so. Throughout the year, we worked collaboratively with all principals to define expectations, and then created a classroom walkthrough instrument designed at giving specific feedback to teachers based on what was observed. Principals piloted different look fours and collaborated together to build this instrument. As for measurable achievement goals, we focused on three specific areas: K through 2 with DIBELS, 3 through 8 with iReady proficiency, and high school with Algebra I and English 2 EOCs. Give me back that presentation. The link probably works on your attachment, but it's not working on the display device. Okay, I'll just comment on it. With our K through 2 goal, we aim to improve our average student growth by 10%. And as you can see in your copy, you can see that we exceeded our goal by increasing by 19%. With our iReady scores, our goal was to increase proficiency from 38 to 53% in both reading and math. And while we had gains in reading growth, we did not in math, and neither hit our target. These formative assessments are meant to inform our instruction as we prepare for summative assessments at the end of the year. And as we continue our work with PLTs, these data will help inform our areas of focus. And finally, with our Algebra I and English 2 EOCs, you can see that we met our growth goal in English 2. And while we increased our growth in Algebra I by 5%, we didn't hit our lofty target to increase by 14. Moving on with student achievement, we had more initiatives and programs that we aimed to get in place throughout our schools, and many of these were first-time offerings. Thanks to our available ESER funds, we were able to hire interventionists in all of our schools to help fill gaps in learning for our students, for where they are versus where they should be. We've seen great gains with students who were working specifically with our interventionists, and we are excited to have funds for these positions for two more years to help with these gaps. We started after-school programs at each elementary school, where students were identified based on iReady and grade performance to take advantage of this program. In addition, we were able to offer some of our ESER funds to community partner groups, who also help serve identified students with targeted needs. We launched high-impact tutoring at our middle and high schools, where the four core subjects were offered to small groups of students with the intent to make the greatest impact. We launched our first-ever content recovery program in our middle schools, where students were able to revisit specific topics or units that they were unsuccessful on, and retry and retest after additional instruction, in an attempt to get back on track during the school year, rather than in summer school at the end of the year. High school students who scored between a 50 and 59 were allowed to participate in a credit recovery program at the end of each semester, in order to relearn and retest identified content needed to get to a minimum grade of 60, in order to earn that passing grade and receive the credit they needed towards graduation. Last year, we launched our first-ever apprenticeship program, where five students applied for and received an opportunity to participate in paid apprenticeships within our school district, that also afforded them the chance to earn high school credit at the same time. The apprenticeships were in IT, business services and maintenance. We are looking to continue these opportunities this year and the years ahead, while also expanding them to some of our industry partners throughout Georgetown County. As was discussed at our safety overview at the August 16th board meeting, we were able to complete training of our anti-bullying program at all of our middle schools, and also all of our elementary. We will be moving on to high schools this year. And finally, we did submit our application for the U.S. Department of Education's Magnet Schools Assistance Program. We should hope- We should hopefully receive word on that application by the end of September. That's quickly approaching. We've had two follow-up conversations with reviewers of our grant to clarify and assist in fine-tuning pieces, and we're taking that as a good sign. Because if they were not interested in our application, they wouldn't be calling to work through some things. So we're hoping to get good news really soon. Moving on to Operations, we had to create and implement a revised Safe Return to School Plan and submit that to the State Department of Education. Not only did we do this successfully, but we also modified it as updates from DEHEC were released. Unfortunately, as you may recall, COVID Delta impacted our operations last September, and then COVID Omicron in the winter. Fortunately though, our plan included response strategies to both, and we were able to address those successfully. You may also recall that we had not planned to continue our virtual school option last year, but the surge in cases caused by Delta resulted in several hundred requests to restart it. The State Department limited the percent of students who could serve virtually. We could serve virtually, so we decided to focus our efforts on K through 6th grade because those students at that time did not have the option of a COVID vaccination. Due to a revised expectation and accountability plan, we had 67 students who went from beginning to end, and all finished successfully. We implemented a blended bell schedule that separated start and end times for elementary and secondary schools. After a survey was completed that showed that the majority of students, parents, and employees wanted a different option than what was in place pre-pandemic. As you saw earlier tonight, we successfully initiated and executed our Phase 3 plan for remaining bond referendum funds, and we have begun planning for the future. As part of the budget process that was recently approved, you may recall that we were able to approve stipends for our maintenance staff who earn licenses, credentials, or certifications in the areas of electrician, pesticides, HVAC, welding, and locksmith to help with our recruitment and retention efforts, and also help lower the incidence where we would need to contract with outside vendors for these services. And finally, as was shared at our August 16th Board Meeting, we completed our initial training for a reunification plan in the event of a crisis situation. With our Finance Goals, the first bullet is a continuation of the previous year's goal and will remain in place as we continue to receive ESER funds for the next two years. The second bullet will be a goal every year, and that is to operate within budget. As Ms. Johnson presented at our August 16th Board Meeting, we did meet that goal. For bullets 3 and 4, we hit a snag. As we began to work through our transition to a software-based program, we discovered that there were a number of challenges that the vendor could not overcome to our satisfaction. As a result, this will be a continuing goal for this school year with a plan to fully launch next July. Until then, we will continue to utilize our current system. And finally, you all are aware that our student enrollment decreased significantly because of COVID, but rather than execute an immediate reduction in force, our ESER funds allowed us to keep everyone employed and utilize these positions in multiple ways to help us address concerns caused by COVID. We have two more years with this funding flexibility, but we are consistently working strategically to return to balance. Last year, we closed that gap from 31.7 to 27.1. The bulk of the remaining positions, 18.7, are interventionist roles focusing on learning loss, and an additional six are in our pre-K program. And if that enrollment returns to pre-pandemic size, then those positions will be within allocation allowance. The first bullet you see here will also be an ongoing goal each year. Teacher recruitment and retention will continue to be an ongoing challenge as we see teacher and staff shortages impacting districts all around us, as well as throughout the state and nation. We have restructured our adept office and have brought in three teachers on special assignment who will be working with K through 12 teachers throughout the district in the areas of support, coaching, evaluation, mentoring, and professional development. With new team members comes new ideas, and we will expand the opportunities of our adept office in the year ahead. After a review of a past process, we set out to revamp our evaluation methods for classified staff to make it more relevant, aligned, and supportive. Dr. Milton led a task force made up of different personnel members to create this new process for us. In addition, we expanded professional development experiences for our support staff. After a successful offering in the 2021 school year, we grew those sessions from one to four in 2122 with the intent of sustaining those as we move forward. Additional goals were added in HR after our last presentation, and I will begin with the second bullet, referencing a more aggressive hiring campaign for hard-to-fill positions. We may run across an interested math, science, or special education teacher who may be interested in coming to GCSD before we know for certain if we will have a vacancy. Last year, we successfully offered seven open contracts for the 22-23 school year, and we were able to place them all. We will continue to utilize this flexibility as we move forward. The final bullet references diversity amongst staff in all locations, including leadership positions. GCSD is committed to attracting, recruiting, developing, and retaining the high-quality, diverse workforce essential to meeting the needs of our students. We have made great strides in hiring more educators of color in our district. We recognize that recruiting a diverse pool of qualified applicants is a significant endeavor, but we also understand that it is crucial to ensure that our workforce represents the demographics of our county and our school district. According to 2020 U.S. Census data, 65% of the population of Georgetown County is white, slightly less than 32% is black or African-American, and 4% are other minority groups. At the end of the 2122 school year, our demographic data showed that 48% of GCSD students were white, 42% were black or African-American, and 10% were from other minority groups. For the 2223 school year, GCSD's workforce is 56% white, 42% black or African-American, and 2% other minority groups. Thus far, despite the challenges of the growing teacher shortage fueled by the declining number of diverse candidates coming from state colleges and universities, GCSD is over 99% staffed for the 2223 school year. We have 137 newly hired certified employees, of which 68% are white, and 26% are black or African-American, and 6% are of other minorities. According to the latest information shared by the South Carolina Commission on Higher Education, 80% of teacher candidates entering the education workforce are white, while only 12% are black or African-American. For the 2223 school year, 795 certified applications were submitted: 73% from white candidates, 16% from black or African-American candidates, and 11% from candidates of other minorities. Despite the low number of minority applicants, GCSD's staffing numbers exceed the percentages of graduating minority candidates and also exceeds the state's average percentage of minority teaching candidates per district. GCSD continues to recruit from colleges and universities throughout South Carolina. In addition, through partnerships with institutions of higher education, we are growing our own as we support and assist aspiring teachers in earning their teacher certificates. GCSD was one of the first districts in South Carolina to partner with Voorhees University, an historically black college and university, in the Grow Your Own program, and we currently have three employees enrolled in this year's cohort. GCSD uses consistent hiring practices when interviewing candidates for administrative positions, beginning with the selection of a diverse pool of candidates. All candidates for a specific school administrative position are asked the same interview questions. However, a portion of the question asked differ by school location, and those questions are based on input from the school staff and community. Presently, 57% of our administrative staff are white, and 43% are black or African-American. I am proud of the progress GCSD is making towards being more diverse, but I also recognize that we cannot stop our momentum. As we continue to strive for the best candidates for all positions within our school district, our efforts to recruit diverse staff will continue. We had two broad goals in the area of communications. The first goal focused on expanding our communications efforts throughout the district and at all schools. We identified a publicity contact at every school to help consistently communicate school and community events to our constituents. We received a lot of positive feedback on these efforts and are looking to expand these more this year. Many of you participated in a collaborative and comprehensive strategic planning process last year that began with a community kickoff event with more than 130 people in attendance and carried on to multiple committees who focused on a number of areas with the intent of improving all aspects of our school district over the next five years. While we are happy with the progress we made in 2122, we are keeping an improvement-oriented mindset as we launch into the 2223 school year. We will continue to focus on the five categories of Student Achievement, Operations, Finance, Human Resources, and Communications. As presented earlier, we spent last year researching, designing, practicing, and revisiting classroom observation protocols that we could utilize to help us in our effort to provide quality feedback to teachers. Now that this has been formalized, this is the year we begin implementation. The information and experiences gained from these observations will help us in several ways. We will be able to validate quality teaching and learning. We will be able to formally look for qualities expected in effective classrooms. We will be able to engage in coaching conversations to help support our teachers in their personal growth and development, and we will be able to identify areas where professional development may be needed across the board. This year, we will be engaging with our school leaders on how to analyze and utilize the data collected from the observations to inform decisions and equip them for coaching conversations. We kick this off at our Summer Administrators Workshop, and it will be part of our monthly leadership meetings throughout the school year. Since last spring, we've been working with some of our industry partners here in Georgetown County to include Ms. Eileen Patinay, our Regional Workforce Advisor with the South Carolina Department of Commerce, and Ms. Tiffany Harrison, Director of Economic Development for Georgetown County, to create an engaging experience for many of our secondary educators. Later this October, we will have representatives from all middle and high schools spending a day visiting different industry partners in our area so that they can personally see the variety of job opportunities available right here in our own backyard. And if this goes well, we would like to expand it in the years to come to include more businesses and more faculty members. As Mr. Stuckey shared at our August 16th Board Meeting, we have implemented our anti-bullying program at all of our elementary and middle schools, and will be pushing forward with all high schools for the upcoming year. And he will be providing an additional update at our October work session. Last spring, we presented a proposal for a new affirmative education program, alternative education program, to include more counseling and restorative services. This year, we will be implementing that and monitoring it for success and any modifications that might be needed. On a similar note, we began to review our discipline policy and administrative consequences for whenever an infraction occurs. We have developed a discipline committee to not only review these, but to also include interventions, restorative practices, and counseling as a part of our response protocol. The hope is to not only address misbehavior consistently, but to also improve it to help our students become more citizenship-ready. The Student Assessments Goals for our plan will now align with our strategic plan just as Dr. Giles shared in her academic overview at the August 16th Board Meeting. What you will notice is that some of these goals have already been struck through and modified. This is because much of our assessment data from 2122 has been unembargoed. Where you see red, this is a result of us surpassing our 2223 academic goals already with last year's assessments. Rather than kicking up our feet and celebrating our gains, which we will celebrate, we will raise our goals and keep pushing forward with even more academic achievement. So as you look at the goals ahead, with our pre-K students, our goal will remain to increase our PALS success rate from 79% to 83%, and our kindergarten readiness assessment scores from 47% to 50%. When you look at the I-ready for first and second graders for ELA, first grade, our goal was to go from 38% to 40%, but last year, we hit 49%. So we're going to go from, our goal is to go from 49% to 52%. And in second grade, it was 40%, we were going to try to get to 42%, but we hit 47%. So now our new goal is 50%. Same thing with math, you see that we've already surpassed our goals. So instead of going from 39% to 42%, we hit 44%, so our next goal is 47%. And then from 27% to 30%, we hit 44%, and our next goal is 47%. Keeping that same trend, you will see where the goals for SC Ready and SC Math have been updated. You will see a similar trend of setting 3% gains in each area. Our strategic plan aims to increase performance by 10% over the five-year span, but our stretch goals will be 3% each year. And if we're able to reach that, we'll see a 15% gain over the five years of our strategic plan. And as you can see, we've already exceeded our goals in all but two areas. The only two areas we didn't exceed them already was fifth grade ELA and seventh grade math. For the sake of time, I'm not going to go through each one, but you see how we've modified our goals there. Our final set of Student Achievement Goals will focus on our high school EOC exams, graduation rate, and college and career readiness improvement. Again, you can see where we exceeded all of our goals on our EOCs from our strategic plan. As Dr. Barino mentioned, U.S. history didn't count. It's going to be reported, but it will not count in our factors. But just for your information, our U.S. history pass rate was at 56%. The state passing rate was 56%. So we will continue to push and stretch in U.S. history to try to exceed those goals. As far as the graduation rates go, those results are still embargoed until October 13th. So we will adjust these goals accordingly once they are released. With regards to CCR, there are specific criteria that must be met in order for a student to be considered college or career-ready, and we will be making intentional efforts to increase those ratings in the years ahead. As shared at our safety presentation, we will need to install and then implement training for the effective use of our new weapons detection instruments and our HALO detection devices. Now that we have the results of our facility study, we will construct a list of five-year priorities using capital dollars for life after our bond funds are exhausted. We have done a reunification plan overview training this past summer. Throughout this year, we will provide specific role training for each member of our reunification team with plans to conduct a reunification live drill next summer. And finally, as we turn the corner on modified attendance expectations due to COVID, we are raising expectations, accountability, and systems to monitor it more effectively. It is difficult for students to maximize their learning potential whenever they have poor attendance. This was a specific area highlighted by one of our committees during the strategic planning process, and we have already begun efforts this year to improve in schools throughout the district. As mentioned earlier, the first three bullets will be ongoing goals for the next few years with regards to ESER funding and staffing balance. Operating within budget will be an annual goal as well. And as mentioned earlier, with regards to the fourth bullet, we will be shifting our efforts to a different platform this year and will participate in planning and professional development with the intent to launch our new system in July 2023. Our first and third bullets in Human Resources will be continuing goals for us each year as our staff are critical to the success of our students, our schools, and our district. As mentioned earlier, we have redesigned our adept department, and this year, we begin implementing all those changes. The final goal for HR is develop a leadership academy for our support staff supervisors. We do a great job of providing leadership We do a great job of providing leadership PD for our principals and assistant principals, but we recognize a need for our other supervisors as well. Oftentimes, our employees excel at their job duties and their performance and are promoted to supervisor positions. When this happens, they shift from managing themselves and their duties to supervising and leading others. For many of these supervisors, this is their first experience in leading a team, and we want to be able to support them in their roles so that they and their teams can be Our final category focuses on communications. Last year, we had a year-long collaborative effort in creating our five-year strategic plan. This year, GCSD will be going through a multi-step accreditation process where we will have several employees, parents, and community members who will be called on to assist us through this process and serve on different committees or panels. We will also look to expand our social media presence by branching out beyond Facebook to help us communicate and celebrate all the wonderful things and significant events happening around GCSD. And finally, we will be evaluating our website operation system to determine improvements or overhaul as we work to improve our information and communication primary source for all GCSD constituents. As you can see, we accomplished a lot last year, and we have a lot more in store for the year ahead. We have a short spotlight video prepared by our communications team that we'd like to share at this time. Well, that concludes the review of our goals from the 2122 as well as a look ahead for 2223, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that anyone may have. Thank you very much.
Lots to drop on, old man. All right. Next audibitions, we see there is a board, should put in the comments or requests, so any of you guys have any?
I do. I just want to say quickly, Dr. Price, I said doctor, Mr. Price, I appreciate the overview that you gave and the information. It really highlighted, and I appreciate all the hard work that's been done with the intervention programs at all schools and the content and credit recovery programs. They really are making a difference, and I applaud the 67 students who successfully completed the virtual program. That was hard work, and that was done because of the work of the students and their parents and their teachers. And like was mentioned earlier, I can't say enough about the parents, about the teachers who have really just gone above and beyond, I think, the call of duty to really make sure that the students are getting what they need. Thank you to everybody.
Just to echo, same thing. Thank you, Mr. Price, and also I wanted just a big shout out to all the teachers, staff, bus drivers, cafeteria workers who've made this year successful so far. Hard work does pay off.
Shout out to the coaches at Waukama for the cross country. There were 700-plus young people there, and it went seamlessly. It was an excellent.
There's one person left. I'll make it quick, I promise.
Oh, that was your tally-hoo.
So I'll keep my remarks short this evening.
No.
Promise, promise. I've talked enough tonight. Earlier today, we surprised our three finalists with the news of their status for Assistant Principal and Principal of the Year. Our three finalists for Assistant Principal of the Year are Dana Fusco from Andrews Elementary, and Courtney Wilson and Michael Russo from Georgetown Middle. Our three finalists for Principal of the Year are Dr. Paula Anderson from Georgetown County Adult Education, Ms. Latonya Goodson from Rosemary Middle, and Mr. Craig Stone from Georgetown High. Congratulations to all of these wonderful administrators on this recognition, and thanks to each of them for their leadership and hard work to make their schools great. Best of luck moving forward in the process. The winners will be announced later in, later in October. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Let's do this right. Do I, do I have?
Promotion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
I owe Chris a. Oh, yeah. Have a good night.
Good night.